Holly, here.
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 John?
Here.
John, here.
Kathy?
Here.
Cindy?
Here.
We will invite you, Mr. Johnson, to come to share your comments with us. But before you do, I just have a brief statement I want to share that we share before every meeting for statements. Comments from visitors must be in relation to Aiken Public Schools and/or to our agenda items. We recommend that you sign up at the comment table, of which you did, if you wish to speak. You will be called up in order as listed on the sign-up sheet. When you come forward to comment, please be seated at the comment table facing the board members. State your name prior to your comment, and comments will be limited to five minutes. The board will not engage in any discussion or debate during this comment session. The board will take the information and find answers as appropriate. As part of board protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassination at a public board meeting. So if you want to come and have a seat at the table and share with us, we'd like to hear from you.
Well, so I'm Darrell Johnson, and I really came here to find out what was going on in the truth of taxation presentation. So I wanted to know if you were going to raise school taxes again or not, and that was my question because there seems to be a real difference in the school boards of what's really needed and what's wanted. And most of the time, we're doing what's wanted and not what's needed. So if I went home, you know, I'm paying $750 a year in my school taxes now, and that's enough. People can't really afford this. I'm surprised no one else is paying anybody. That's what I want. So I was hoping I could comment after the truth of taxation unless I'm just completely not up to what's going to happen there.
There is a comment section.
There is a comment section. So why don't I ask you to have a seat back at your table, and we're going to have a presentation on tax, on the truth of taxation, and then I'll invite you to come back if you have, if your questions are not answered there. So, thank you. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda or revise or remove any items as necessary.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
There a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Any abstentions? Motion carries. I do not see that we have students here for a student council report, so we can move on to the truth and taxation presentation. Heather, if you'd be willing to share with us?
Sure. So I have that presentation up on the slide. So I will start tonight's meeting with just this short presentation. Following the presentation, we'll take time for questions and comments. So we're holding tonight's hearing to discuss the levy that the board will take action on tonight as part of the regular meeting. So all school districts are required to hold hearings based on tax levies for taxes payable in 2024. And then we also need to talk, so we need to talk about the levy, the 2024 levy, and the fiscal year 2024 budget, and then public comment. So we'll start with some background information on the school's budget and timeline. Our fiscal year runs from July, June, so we operate through our fiscal year '24. The board approved the FY '24 budget last June, and they will approve grade visions to that budget by next June. The board set the preliminary levy in September, and the final levy will be certified later this evening. This slide shows the timeline of the levy and the budget process. We are currently finishing up the '22-'23 audit, which was approved last month in November, and we're operating in the '23-'24 fiscal year. The board will be approving the final levy tonight for the taxes payable in 2024, which will be for the '24-'25 school year. The legislature sets the tax policy and education funding support. They establish the formulas such as tax capacity rates, property class rates, exclusions, and they determine the education per people funding and LTFM and all the formulas that go into the state aid and levy. MDE calculates the levy for the limit, the levy limit for all school districts based on enrollment, property values, leases, referendums. This determines our September proposed levy, which we certify at maximum. The school approves the final levy in December, which will hopefully happen tonight. The final levy is certified and reported to the county auditor. The county auditor calculates the taxes. The levy amount is allocated to each parcel based on value and classification. The county assessor determines values and classifications. The county treasurer collects them in 2024 and distributes to the various jurisdictions. So this slide shows splitting the total levy by net tax capacity and referendum market value. As you can see, the net tax capacity is spread on all parcels, and the referendum market value is spread on homestead and commercial properties. So the net tax capacity, that is, an example of that is the capital project levy. So the reason why we went for that capital project levy rather than like an operating referendum is so that all jurors, all parcels are taxed rather than just the homestead. Just as a reminder, I know you guys probably all know that. This graph shows the net tax capacity and the referendum market value split as the prior. It's just graph, pie graph form of what the last slide showed. When people receive their taxes or their proposed tax statements, they see a compilation of all the taxing jurisdictions, school, township, or city and county. We can't answer any questions pertaining to those jurisdictions. We are unable to address any questions pertaining to the property values or classifications. If your question pertains to one of these items, please contact the county or township or city. This graph shows the voter-approved levy versus other. The voter-approved is the capital project levy. 2024 is the second year of that capital project levy. This slide was created by Ellers. It just, I thought it was a good slide to show just because it shows the separation of the state aid trailing that inflation. So in 2024, the funding trailed inflation by 1,282 per people, and in FY '24, or FY ' '25, it trailed by 1,356 per people.
And by trail, you mean it's less than?
So it's less. So, yeah, the inflation keeps going up and up and up, and the funding that we receive does not. So there's that separation, which just shows why districts are so, have such a hard time meeting their expenses. Lots of funding shortfalls.
As is every home, right?
Right. So I'm looking at the school's budget. Revenues and expenditures are separated by fund. The funds in the bottom of this slide represent the funds that are not supported by the levy. So that would be the food service, the 18, Fund 18 custodial, which is scholarships, and then Fund 45, which is OPEB for other post-employment benefits. With that background, we're going to take a look at the revenues. So the, it's kind of hard to see, but the revenues that are in the annual funds, 9, 3, and 5, they have the majority, and then, and they're, they all complete the general fund budget. So, so in total, the revenues budgeted for this year are about 17.5 million. And this just shows the revenue sources for FY '24. So the total is 17.5 million. The levy total is about 15% of that total. And all other revenue sources makes up the other 85% of that revenue. State sources, this is revenue, revenues by source. So it's kind of what we just looked at, but split, going into more detail. So state sources are about 66.61%. Local sources, including the levy, are 18.52%, and remaining funds are federal sources and other sources. Now we'll move to the expenditures. Again, you'll see expenditures broken down by fund, and they total over 18 million for the budgeted expenditures for fiscal year '24. And just as, just want to note here, this includes Fund 6, which is a construction fund, and that'll be spent down as we finish up the tennis court, or we did finish up the tennis courts for the most part. Here's a breakdown of where the money is spent. Almost 13 million, or 70% is on wages and benefits.
And that's pretty common, I believe, in other districts. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's typically around 70% of the budget from district to district.
It's actually lower than most industries. Yeah, for some reason in my mind, I thought that in years past, it's been about 73% here, but...
This graph shows expenditures by area as the previous slide shows. So you can just see that salaries and wages is the, that big portion. Actually, the benefits is the red. So between the blue and the red, that makes up the 70% with purchase services being the next largest component. This is the summary of the budget that was approved in June 2023 for fiscal year '24. So on the left-hand side of that slide is the proposed budget, or the budget that was approved. So you can see the plus or minus, the surplus or deficit of the budget, budget that was approved. And at the very bottom of the graph, the table on the left side, it shows that we are deficit spending by, or planning to deficit spend by almost 800,000. Well, if you go up to this Fund 6, we are spending down that construction fund, and that's included. So that's over 900,000 of that. So then if you go on the right, it just summarizes those portions. So funds 1, 3, and 5, in that, that total is 282,616. That is a surplus revenues over expenditures. And then that construction fund, spending that down. And then the Fund 45, other post-employment benefits, spending that down, and that's preferable and planned because we have that money sitting there, and that'll just decrease as those benefits decrease. And then the self-sustaining funds overall is negative, but that's okay because they have balances in those funds to sustain themselves. So we're not, you know, we're not spending into deficit at this time. And as we saw last, we are at about 25% in our unreserved fund balance, which is what our policy states or kind of signifies where we plan to. And with that, that is all I have, other than I, I know everyone here knows pretty much, but just to contact your legislators and see what the changes and things are.
Mr. Johnson, did you have your questions answered, or would you like to come and, you're welcome to come back?
Because I don't know where else to go. So my questions really didn't get answered because what I thought this budget was going to be was going to tell me if I had to pay another $200 a year in taxes or not. Because that's what the budget does, is send this money to homeowners that live here. And that's what they get charged by. Well, I'm not versed enough to understand what went on tonight. And then someone can get back to me. I want to know if, me being homestead, am I paying more school taxes than, say, the guy down the street, which is non-homestead?
No. When a homestead person has a, I don't have an example like me of that tax statement, but when, when someone's homestead, you, you get an exclusion. And so the guy down the street that's seasonal, they don't get an exclusion for the homestead. So you pay, you pay less, but someone doesn't live here for the money.
Pay less in state tax or school tax? I thought a non-homesteaded person does not pay school tax.
As far as school, they, they vote on some of these. It just depends on whether it's money for the, for like a referendum or if it's through the operating level, so...
Okay, so one of the big ones is this $500 rep, that one.
So if you look at this slide, the, on the left is the net tax capacity, the orange, and that is taxed on all parcels. So that is your seasonal rep, people are paying on that. And on the right...
And before you get to the right, when we passed the last referendum, that was based on the net tax capacity. And so you're talking about your increase from that, is that what you mean?
Right.
Yeah, and so that was distributed to all of the parcels throughout the county, including your neighbors.
And then my other question is, why is, why, the value of your home does not necessarily mean the value of your income?
Correct.
But that's kind of what the school is taxing us on.
Well, I think, I think the state sets certain amounts, and then the county assessor is assessing the property, and then the county auditor is, who was working with the treasurer to collect that. So I don't believe that there's any provisions regarding income when they're looking at property tax valuation. You're right about that.
But I mean, it still all boils down to the board, what I get to pay in school taxes.
No. We pass, we don't, we don't pass it down to you individually. We pass a, what we need in our levy. The assessor decides where that goes. So that's on your, your county assessor. That's who you need to talk to about why your property is valued at that.
No, the county assessor says how much school tax I'm going to pay.
So that...
By setting my house value, but not anything else.
The Department of Education sets the formulas on the RMB, and on the net tax capacity is typically the voter-approved.
I mean, I just feel that this whole school thing is getting out of hand because people can only afford so much if they, it's kind of a shame, but I grew up in this town, I went to Aiken's High School, but when I wanted more stuff, I moved to where the stuff was, not asked everybody else to pay. And that's what I think is going on.
Yeah, I think part of what you're, what you are experiencing and feeling is that as, as the cost of education has risen, the state legislature has not kept pace in their funding to schools. And so there's a funding gap. And the only way that the school can fill that funding gap sometimes is through levy. And, and we also are capped at how much of a levy we can pass.
But on the same token, and I don't want to be disrespectful to the board or the kids here, if there's not the money here, they just can't have it. You can't wish back to the things of what's needed and what's wanted is two different things, just like your budget at home. You may want a whole bunch of stuff, but your budget says I can't have it.
Yeah, unfortunately, the state legislature puts a ton of mandates in education, but they never fund those mandates. And so those fun, we have to do them no matter what. We have to abide by the law, but there's no funding mechanism in place to pay those.
Well, can anybody ever just say no?
I don't know, but you know, our representative in our district, Mr. Crusher, is on the education committee at the state legislature, along with our state senator for our district. They're both in the education sections. So if I were you, I've been doing it quite a bit, I write to them and tell them what we need as communities on the state level so that we aren't passing this down on to our local taxpayers. We don't enjoy that. We all pay taxes here, too. We have to take that on. It's unfair at that level, and they're both in education. Our last ones were all about wild, they're on the wildlife and that type of stuff, but the new two are both on education and education finance. So they should have all the answers to your questions.
They also would be the ones that could make changes.
Mm-hmm. That could relieve this.
Changes start at the bottom and have to work their way up.
You know, you're, the amount you're taxed on, the, I think the formula runs off of your valuation of your home, correct? Now, I think we saw a large increase because I'm a, I'm a homeowner and property owner in Aiken County. I think we saw a large increase in, in property values from the year, was it '21 to '22? That, that's where you're, to be honest with you, that's where your huge increases come from.
I understood, and I still think, that one year, there was an extra $500 that really wasn't voted on or approved. It was just done by, and I don't know if this board or the last board was done.
Now, this is a fairly new board.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't passed any taxes on that.
But I still think that's on the...
The other thing, Mr. Johnson, I think sometimes in years past, we've had a slide that shows the area districts around us and how much our, our independent school district one is collecting in taxes for our students compared to our surrounding areas. And I can tell you that we are, I believe, the lowest of the 10 surrounding. I think Ms. Hippe is trying to maybe find that slide. And so I think, I guess the reason why I'm putting that out is I want you to know that I think we as a board are very cognizant of every dollar that we are collecting from the taxpayers. As Ms. Mindrum said, we are all taxpayers ourselves. We don't take any of that money for granted. We are trying to get the biggest bang for every duck, every dollar that we spend here.
So this is that slide.
And so you can see that Aiken is the third column there, and then Pierce is lower than us, but we are lower than Hinckley-Finlayson, Casslake-Bina, Pillager, and Crosby-Irington. I believe we're also lower than Hill City and McGregor as well. So...
And drastically lower than Brainerd.
It still doesn't put money in your pocket, but we're trying to help you to understand.
And, 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 you know, I guess my objective here is to make people think that there is only so much money in the pot. And after that, you gotta either move or, or whatever. Basically, I thought if I went with non-homestead, I wouldn't be paying near so much school tax.
I don't believe that that's the case, but that's a good question for the county auditor.
And that's what I'll have to check because...
Because, yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
You only have so much money in a pot. Just because I happen to have a house and I live on the lake, no one knows how I earned that house. And there's no reason I have to give it up between state taxes and school taxes, is how I feel. And I think, I'm surprised, while maybe everybody knew what this meeting meant more than me, but I ain't. And I think you guys need to know that that's, before you pass these things, that that's where it goes, right to the bottom.
Yeah, we do hear you, and we appreciate you coming in.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, we do appreciate it.
Appreciate you having me talk.
Yep.
Thanks, Darren.
Thanks for coming in.
I appreciate your comments, and we do, we do take them seriously and do understand. So thank you. Okay. Thank you, Heather. And I believe that we have to approve the levy or not. So I will entertain a motion.
Well, what is the percentage that the levy, is it going in at maximum?
Yes, but we have to approve it at the specific dollar amount, which is...
Total levy, the limit's $3,174,000. Is it $602.04?
40 cents.
40 cents, yep, 40 cents.
Do you need that dollar amount in the motion? Okay.
So somebody want to make the motion?
Yeah.
To approve a levy at $3,174,000?
I'll make that motion.
$602.40.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any more discussion?
To who?
Well, to Siri, I guess.
Okay, outside of Siri, is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Any abstentions? Motion carries. And I, I think as we do pass the motion for the levy, I think that we do need to offer thanks to the community for supporting the district and, and for, for being there financially. Because without the community, without the community, we'd have no reason to have a school, and without a school, we'd have no community, and so we have to work in partnership together. And I think that one point, it was 1.9 million or something that was coming from other sources. There, there's a lot of community support.
Yes.
I would like to also acknowledge all of the booster clubs that are funding the very, very vast majority of all of our sports and extracurricular activities. So then we can use the money that we have to be specific for education, so...
Yeah, absolutely. And it was, so the breakdown by percentage, Heather, between like the capital project levy and then the, the other funding source, like two-thirds of that is the, coming off of the capital project levy.
Most of it is the voter-approved, yeah. And the other is, you know, set by a legislature, so it's not, it's not set by the school board.
Right. Okay, I think we'll move on in our agenda, and we'll move into old business, and we have second readings on Policy 413, 416, 507, 531, and 533.
And these are, this is second reading on these, we've seen these, again, to come through the process with the policy committees that are on the agenda last meeting. Second reading is to make them official policies.
Hold on one second. We, we did the truth in taxation meeting at six. We, we did the truth and taxation meeting at six, right? Regular meeting after that, or did it all go together?
It just kind of flowed together.
Flows together, right?
Because if, was that stated that way or was the meeting, regular meeting?
In the notification, it did say six o'clock, truth and taxation proceeding to regular meeting.
So it's immediately following.
Yeah.
I think what he's getting at is if we had more people who wanted to do public comment that weren't here because we started truth and taxation at six.
So do we want to back up then? Is that what?
Is there anyone that wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, was there any more comments from the public, I guess?
On truth and taxation?
No, outside of.
Outside of.
Outside of truth and taxation, regular public comment.
Okay.
Okay. So the truth and taxation meeting is over and we're rolling into our regular.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
I didn't make it clear that we were just transitioning. I'm very sorry.
Because I saw some folks come in at 6:30. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so we are rolling into our regular meeting. And, and we have these policies before us for the second reading. And so I would entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve policies in all of seven, A1 through five.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion about the policies?
I think all of those are based on recommendations from the legal staff at the.
At MSBA.
MSBA.
So. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Then we're going to move into number eight, new business. And the first thing there is to approve the consent agenda that goes all the way down to A.
A11.
A11. And I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion about any of the items in the consent agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Any abstentions? Motion carries. And then we have some discussion items that are 8B in the agenda. And the first one is to approve to combine our polling places.
If I may?
Please.
Yeah, this is done, we do it on a yearly basis. If you remember last spring when we had the special election, we were able to combine the polling place into one spot for the school election. November is a regular election year, so the elections that are up, local, city, county, township, state, national, will all be held in November. So this resolution doesn't impact that. It would only impact if we would end up having to have a special school, just a special school related school board election. So it's just an annual, an annual notice or an annual request to combine polling places. And this, again, this year we would combine it at one spot at, at the Journey North Church if there was just a school election.
I don't think it's Journey North.
I know.
What is it? North Woods Community Church, I think it is.
They don't have the resolution for it. But, but yeah, so it'd be, let's see.
I'm sure the resolution is.
It does. It does. I'll make a motion to approve the combined polling place at the church located at 810 Second Street Northwest in Aiken.
Thank you for being so specific.
Got it.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Not that far along.
Is there any more discussion about combining the polling places? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Any abstentions? Motion carries. And then next, we have to discuss our January and February 2024 regular meeting dates.
Yeah, so the meeting dates in January and February, both fall on a holiday. The Monday, it's Martin Luther King Day in January and President's Day in February. Typically in the past, we move them up one week earlier. That would put the January meeting on January 8th and the February meeting on February 12th. I'd recommend that we move both meetings one week earlier.
That actually, we're required to have our organizational meeting the first Monday, business Monday in January. So doesn't that also double why we move it there too?
All right. Do you need a motion or do we just need to discuss?
So the 8th and February what, 12th?
January 8th and February 12th.
12th, yes.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to move the January and the February meeting dates.
I'll move. I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Any abstentions? Motion carries. And then the next item on our list is to discuss and approve the strategic plan that we have worked so diligently on. Dan, do you want to?
Yeah, I can jump in again. The strategic plan, I'm not sure if we want or need more discussion on it. We had a good meeting last week, lots of discussion at the community meetings leading us up to this. I'm looking, the board's good with the strategic plan as it's written and as it shows. We can approve that and we'll move forward with it in, from here with presenting that back out to the community and getting it on, on our social media and on our website and, and so on. So hopefully we had a chance to review that, but it's pretty much, I don't think we made any changes Monday night to what was there. So I'd like to ask for a motion to approve that and, and we'll move forward.
I'll make the motion to approve the strategic plan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? I know we have discussed this at length, but you know, sometimes things, you sit on it for a little while and you think about it.
I actually wanted to say that I'm glad Cindy made the motion. I was going to wait for her to make it because she's been waiting a very long time for this to be done. And I felt like that would be her prize at the end.
And I was feeling like I really wanted to be the second, but.
Like an early Christmas.
Right.
I really appreciate everyone's hard work, especially with all of the community members that took part on that and both with the surveys as well as with all of the meetings. It really is nice to have everyone moving in the same direction with all of the students and the community at, at the front of our minds. So I appreciate everyone's work on this.
You know, just to make sure that, you know, we have a plan. And I've seen a lot of these and then they go on the shelf and then they sit there, right? So we should hold ourselves accountable for regular, regular updates at, at some sort of an interval. You know, whether it's quarterly, I mean, at a bare minimum, I would think. So I think that lays on you, Dan, with administration on certain things unless, you know, there are parts that we have to do too as a, as a board on that also, that we have our responsibility. So that, that's what is pretty critical.
Well, we had talked about, if I can jump in, that depending on what's on the agenda from given months, that how, whatever item on the strategic plan that relates to, we, we connect the two and keep bringing it back and bringing the plan back into focus. So that'll be our intent moving forward. And it might look different a year from now than what it does as we get rolling. But yeah, I agree. It doesn't do a lot of good to leave it sitting on a, on the shelf or on the website someplace if we're not referring to it.
And that was, one part of that plan is to have an annual review of the plan, probably during the summertime and to make amendments to it too. So, so that basically specifying the plan. So we'll definitely want to continue that.
Well, the strategic plan is definitely intended to be a roadmap into the future for, for the district. And so we do need to be accountable to it. We spent ourselves an enormous amount of time. We invited members of the community to invest their time and energy into it. And so it, it truly is a roadmap that has, I, I'm really very thankful for the community members who participated in the process from the beginning to the end because the strategic plan is really, I feel like, has had input from all of our major stakeholders, even all the way down to students. And so it truly is a roadmap into the future.
And I think it also will really help us in the future to make sure that when we are spending the tax dollars, that they're very intentional and focused on our priorities that align with the strategic plan too. So.
I think it'd be good for the community to know that those community members probably put in, what would you guys say, 12 to 14 hours with us in here in the media center?
All the reading they have to do outside.
Yes, yeah, so they really did put a lot of time into this along with us. And we are really grateful for that. We had a good turnout and they came back even after the first time. So it was really wonderful.
I also want to offer publicly a thank you to Gail Gilman from MSBA. She really did a phenomenal job of leading us through the process. And I have to say, initially I was a little bit concerned about doing a hybrid thing where she was remote and we would all be gathered here. But it really did work out very well. And, and she really did do an amazing job leading us through this. So, so we want to say thank you to MSBA for lending her to us and, and for having the, the availability to be able to contract with them to do this work, so.
Well, it was a very efficient process and it also saves a lot of costs by not having a facilitator here for every one of those meetings. Can't imagine what that would, that would cost three times the, and, and maybe not as good of a product because of her experience working with many different districts. So those are all huge positives.
Well, is there any more discussion? And we'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign. Any abstentions? Motion carries. I, we're handling that one. Man, that one's getting gavelled in. Yeah, this is a, this is a, a good day for the district. And, and I said I would do cartwheels when we got this completed, but you know what? I'm too old for that. I'll break a bone. No cartwheels, but I'm doing a happy dance on the inside, so. Okay, we're going to move on to 8B4 to discuss and approve the naming of the old gym, the Noel Bailey Gymnasium.
Yeah, a couple of community members come to me and I emailed the board shortly after asking to, you know, what would it take to rename the old gym, the wrestling gym in honor of Coach Noel Bailey? Board members that responded, I think you all responded that you're more than in favor of it. Working with a couple of different booster club members and Noel's daughter, Dawn. We, we wanted it to be a surprise to Noel, but at the same time, we wanted to be able to plan. So I apologize to the board for now that you know, but we did announce it last Thursday night at the wrestling, the wrestling meet, the triangular, that we would be renaming it.
I'll move.
Noel's very much honored by it.
That didn't take long. You didn't even get to finish.
I almost did it right when it said it, but you started the talk.
I'd like to second that motion.
I'll verit.
Pleased and honored to recognize Noel Bailey. He's a former teacher here for many years as well as the wrestling coach. He's also in the National Hall of Fame for wrestling coaches and definitely on the top list of who's who. He has a, a great amount of integrity and compassion and character. Certainly was a privilege for me to serve as a fellow school board member with him. And I cannot think of anybody more deserving. We certainly all think of Coach and Noel Bailey every single time we walk into that gym for all of his many wonderful attributes with respect to him. So very pleased and thank you to the people who brought this forward. It was a wonderful idea.
You know, I had Noel for a teacher in 1980. And he was always, you know, I wasn't a wrestler. Well, I wasn't organized wrestler.
You should have been.
But I wasn't, I wasn't organized wrestler, yeah. But he, he treated you in the classroom, it didn't matter. He did not treat us, probably was a little harder on his wrestlers than he was with the others. But he, he treated everybody fairly as, and so as an educator, he was awesome. Absolutely phenomenal educator. I really enjoyed him from that standpoint. And then throughout all the years, I think a lot of respect for that. And it's, it's exactly the time we need to do it. So I appreciate the people also bringing that forward. It was a great idea. Wish I came up with it, but it was an easy one to like, yeah.
Well, he's had a positive influence on thousands of.
Kids that came from this.
From, from the area and not just in this community too. And not just, you know, it's good to point out, not just as a, as a coach, as a teacher, mentor.
A community member.
Just a great community member.
What's the date on it?
So what we'll do is January 19th, Aiken hosts the, I think that's a Friday night, the 19th, host the mid-state conference tournament. That night we'll do, the, I'm working with a couple of members. We'll get signage available and we'll just kind of do a little bit more of a formal ceremony and have some of the signage available. And most of Noel's coaching career was in the mid-state conference and it's.
Great, Great River, isn't it?
Mid-state is what we're, I might've said Great River the other night because we were in the mid-state for a long time, then we went to the mid, Great River for 10 years. And now we're back in the mid-state. So it is the last year of the mid-state because they're just banning as well. So just kind of a, a work with Jason Klein and Jim Hendrickson who are running the conference tournament. And I think we'll get the last match of the evening, Aiken Wrestling's in the old gym. And we'll do a little thing before that. Not quite sure on the time yet or if we're under by the coaches, if they're all right with that. And I will do it, but something that night, that's a Friday night. You get message on it. I'm optimistic thinking that we'll probably get some alumni back, watch a little wrestling and then honor, honor Coach Bailey, Noel Bailey as, as we make it official. So January 19th, Friday night.
So I, you know, I am wondering if we shouldn't, we don't really have a policy around how we do this. And, and it doesn't happen very often, so I don't know that it's worth having a policy. But I wonder if we, as the board, shouldn't write and pass a resolution that, it doesn't have to be real long, that could be read the night, that night.
Yeah, we can pass the motion here tonight and then we could write a formal resolution for that January board meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a thing.
Will they need volunteers for their reception? I'm assuming you're going to have cake and punch because you don't name something.
Put something on a tournament.
Right.
I don't know what it'll be.
I'd be willing to volunteer because I would like the wrestlers, instead of the booster club, having to be back there handing out that cake and punch to be out there talking and that stuff. So I'd be willing to volunteer.
Okay.
But I bet the, yeah, I bet the concessions, it's probably FFAs doing that.
And I think they farmed it all up, farmed that part of it off to one of the other groups, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we have the motion, we have a second. Do we have any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, so we're going to move on. Do we have two administrative reports? Do we have board member reports?
I've been waiting all night for the.
No, he can't talk yet. He's got to wait until. We're going to keep you in suspense like a child on Christmas Eve waiting for Santa. No, in all seriousness, are there any board reports? Brian, do you want to share with us about PTO?
I would love to. PTO.
You should have started with ho, ho, ho.
No. Yes. All right, PTO, as, as always, they have a lot of activities going on. Tonight's meeting, I was only there for a portion of it because of getting here for the truth and taxation. But they did approve $1,100 to send the first grade to dinosaur. exhibit at the Rife Center in Grand Rapids. Oh, in February. Also approved, pending snowfall, the sixth graders are going to be going to the Long Lake Conservation Center. They approved $1,200. It'll be on February 2nd or the 9th, and the focus on that is winter activities, and they'd be with the professional staff from Long Lake. So, excellent program, and expose kids to winter recreational activities, skiing, snowshoeing, bir, winter bird watching, winter plant identification, trees, that type of thing, so. Should be a great event. They're hoping to have snow by then. If they don't have snow, then they're, they're gonna cancel that, just because you wouldn't be able to do the recreation side of it. So, working on that. Otherwise, they have a lot of additional business I had to leave during that time, but working on, working on some, some interesting signage on promoting teamwork in, in the schools, to put in the cafeteria. They did generate $300 in a Pamper Chef fundraiser, and they're just gonna start on the Walk-a-thon when I left, so. But a lot of great work going on, and looking ahead, should be some really excellent events this spring. End of report.
You know, one of the great things about PTO that I think often is overlooked is that they do do an enormous amount of fundraising, and their fundraising contributes to the life of the student population. You know, they're, they fund all these field trips and all kinds of extra stuff, and so, their contributions, they, they help lower our tax levy, don't they? So, so we are, we do appreciate them and their hard work, so. But there are any other board member reports?
I'm gonna run through the.
Yes, if you would run through them, please. We're gonna move to committee reports.
All right, I'm sorry, I didn't have you.
That's all right. Finance and facilities is first.
And I think Holly was there. Holly, you're, you wanna run, whether you want me to?
Um, I think, well, we kind of talked a little bit about it last week. We had discussed the, um, the new server that we needed, that was in that one. We had checked out the new camera system. Roland was also there with us. We had talked about the fax classroom. And, yeah, we went over our, that we will be selling our fleet of computers, right? That's our next one that's coming up, because our iPads are newer. They were in the last one, so. And we did talk about doing away with, like, not getting the full subscription on some of the software that we have, because it's not doing what we need it to do, and looking into some different software for how the teachers can access what the kids are doing in the classroom on their technology while they're at their desks. So, we're looking at, for something better, because we are currently paying for one that's not that user-friendly, so it's not getting used as often. So, we are gonna look for something better. Dan has ICS sending the engineer for the auditorium.
Yep.
That's a big one.
They'll be working on a report. They want, just need to see some blueprints, so Steve was gonna find blueprints for the auditorium in one of the secret hiding spots around the building, so.
And I think we talked about the fax classroom and after the fire, and how that was moving along and we.
Carpenters were there today. I didn't get a chance to go down, looked this afternoon, but they're putting up the, above the cabinets and putting that back in, sheet rocking around the ductwork and so on, was what I was told.
Yeah, we had a little more problem with smoke damage than we originally expected, so all the ceiling was out and that kind of stuff, and I had to get that out of there, but Surf Pro was doing a very good job, Steve said, so. You can't think, we did have, wait, we had two presentations. Two seniors came in and did presentations, one on the track facility, which we have talked about at length here at this site, and then one on the ripple side playground and accessibility, which we've also talked about, and I know that Laura's kind of looked into a little bit of that kind of stuff too, but those were our two senior presentations we had during that meeting too. Did I miss anything?
I think you had it. You got them.
Awesome, thank you. We'll move on to the wellness committee.
Heather and I were there. Do you want to speak out here, Heather, or do you want me to? Okay. All right. Um, Heather's been working really hard on this wellness committee. We're due for the triennial assessment, and so the group worked on reviewing the wellness policies, the different components of that. We tried to go through most of it as much as we could, but found we need to do some interviews throughout the district on our nutrition education, if we're meeting the standards for USDA school meals, nutrition standards, what we're doing for our physical education activity, wellness promotion, and how we're implementing this, evaluating this and communicating it out. Mrs. Mars asked, or was going to do a survey at the high school level, I think, about their school lunch options and what they would like to see more of or less of, so that we can make sure that kids are eating in less waste, and still meeting those standards that we have to meet. We will wrap up our survey, our interviews, and circle back at our next meeting with this and talk about the spring health fair at that time too. Anything else, Heather?
I think you hit all the points.
Heather so nicely made a summary, and I was reflecting.
Yeah, okay, yeah. That's what I was doing too.
Well, thank you. And then we'll move on to the policy committing, meeting.
That was just Dan and Jim and I.
Yep.
And they're all the policies that are right below it, nothing really big. Most of them are just reviews.
Yep, and changes, any changes or recommendations of MS, Minnesota School Board Association and their legal team, so. First reading, no action needed on these, on them at this time.
We did also just lightly look at our attendance policy as kind of an extra in our conversation, but that was really the gist of our.
Thank you. And then the agricultural meeting.
Brian and I were there, and Dan for a short while, but Rocco kind of gave us an update on the amount of students that are interested in signed up for Ag classes. He had talked about tweaking some of the class descriptions and possibly renaming some to appeal to more students, sticking to Agriculture 1 and Agriculture 2, and trying to incorporate a more broad amount of topics rather than being a little bit more specific for, or to horticulture, floriculture, and just having it be just kind of a building block out of Ag 1. He said that the medals class and the engines classes are really popular, and talked about the different funding that he's been getting. There's, he gave us a little tour of the shop. I didn't get to stay the whole time, but all new engines that the kids get to work on, and he's been really happy with that. He's been using some of his grant funding on shelving and some other things, just to streamline his shop a little bit more. He has a lot of irons in the fire, but I think he has enough passion and, I don't, yeah, energy, yeah, to, to make a lot of things happen. But also, FFA, the equine team is going to state, and also, they had, I don't know if there was one other state team or not, I can't remember. Do you remember, Brian?
There's another, it's coming up. Yeah, it's coming up, yeah.
But he's seeing those eighth graders and kids that he's invested in since coming to Aiken. He's seeing them continue to be an Ag and have progressed in those programs, so he's, he's very proud of that.
And the new engines come, I don't remember if you went to Alex, or what tech, but instructors go to a training in the summer, put on by, these are Briggs and Stratton, that, then they get to come back, they'll send back anywhere from six to 10 engines that they can use as part of their class.
Yep.
So, Aiken hasn't done that for a while. I mean, we had all these old engines that have been taken apart and put back together. We got to the point where they weren't always put back together right, so kids were coming in with engines that didn't run to begin with. So, the idea is that the engines run, and then there's a process they go through to break them down and put them back together, and they need to run when they're done, so. That's, that's been, again, that's, if the instructors go to the trainings put on by these, like I said, this one's Briggs and Stratton, then they'll send engines.
Yeah, because that was a donation, right? Lisa had that in her thing last month.
Yep, there's a donation. Perkins, Perkins Funding too, helped fund. So, they have two sets of small, small engines now, and they're on stand, so they don't slide off the work tables and, so. There's diesel and gasoline, small engines.
Yeah, and he also mentioned the Baker Space, that's in partnership with Laura, and he said that that has been an enjoyable process, and hoping to continue to cultivate that and get more people in, people working on their own projects but teaching students at the same time.
And he completed his certification. To be an instructor.
Oh, yeah, that he has. The licensing stopped me out as far as that. I know he's doing case certification at one time too. He was working on that last summer. It's a, it's an instructional program. I think he had that too already last summer, so.
Yeah, I don't know what I said.
He's just working hard at trying to, trying to come up with small space improvements where you don't really have much space. You know, it's, like with the gas welding areas, there's like eight booths, and you can really only have like fours, maybe not even four students in there, so they're gonna make that, shrink that down so just four can operate there. You couldn't have eight weld in there safely anyway. Moving things onto the walls, off the floor. He showed us a lot of steel that he's getting as donations, which is fantastic. He had a pile of steel there worth like $5,000 that was donated, so. Without those kind of things, that, that program would really be hurting, you know, by not getting those donations. They're starting, they're manufacturing some items, which are pretty cool. They're working on like fish house tow bars and snowmobile lifts.
Oh, yeah.
That they can manufacture, and then they're working on some agricultural equipment as well to potentially, they're trying to follow a model that some, many other schools are doing, where they're using their shop space and producing items for sale to the outside. It's a great, great activity. They learn the whole process of design and manufacturing. They have to do the math and the design work and calculate the costs and then produce products. It's just very, space is extremely limited there versus what other schools have, so they can do things on kind of a micro scale. But that's where, job growth is in the trades and the skills are in high demand, so more we can do to work with those students, and there's, there's something for everybody in that area in this entire school to take advantage of.
It's a valuable program to our district and to our students. It gives students an opportunity to experience something totally different. And there are career paths that are there, and if a student enters into that area and, and can access what's available to them, it can really send them into an amazing career path for a lifetime, so. So, we're thankful, we're thankful for those who support and participate there. All right, we're gonna move on to the principal reports. Mr. Dockin, you are the first one on the list, so you get to go first.
A lot of little activities going on at the elementary. Past few weeks, we've got a curriculum on elementary classrooms, so lots of community engagement, adults coming in, volunteering to the kids. It's pretty cool to see the interactions there. You guys haven't seen, but Sam built the gingerbread halls kind of from scratch at the elementary. The kids have been getting a kick out of that, but it's, it's amazing, so if you can stop in this week and see it, awesome. Kindergartens, had a lot going on too. We've been having a lot of students over from the high school. They've been doing some reading too, early K2 in our building. Food buddies this week, full arts rest day to culminate their transportation units. Doctor science has been going on, and then they've been doing a lot of reading, focusing emphasis every day, building their reading skills. Spanish class came over, we have the second graders. There's also been a lot of art activities a couple times a month, so. And then we had our Christmas program, K2 Christmas program last week. Huge success, so for K and 1, it was a, a program that's pretty much full, and it's going to be for our next group.
Thank you. And Ms. Mars, you are second on the list.
Like Andy said, it is busy. It is busy. You know, one of the things we're missing is, we always have our gingerbread contest with our foods classes, and this year, we're still waiting for the fact it's going to be done, so kids haven't been able to do that, so I'm missing that, because usually we have the judging and see all the fun, creative things, and the kids are putting it together at the last minute, but hopefully by the end of, when we come back from break, it'll be all done and ready to go, so that'll be exciting. The concert is tonight, so in 10 minutes, less than 10 minutes, I'm leaving to go down to the 9/12 Holiday Concert with the Madrigals and Concert Choir, and Pizzabear and Handel are playing tonight, and then piano students are doing some recital performances tonight as well. We're working on our MTSS system, which is our multiple tiers support systems, trying to find our tier two interventions, so trying to figure out how to support students better by looking at data, figure out what we need to do differently to support students. We are starting a support class for tenth through 12th graders that are feeling some credits that have been identified through the process, telling parents to see if that's something that they want to do for one of their hours during the day, second semester. We have a health fair that's gonna be happening on March 6th, and we have over 20 businesses right now that are, have signed up to do it. We are doing great. So, spread the word, we're doing a variety of health and wellness topics for students, and then we'll do something in the evening for parents with a meal. Robert Wood has given us a donation of $2,000 to help with the funding of different prizes for students and a meal, and so we're really hoping to just kind of give students strategies and tips on how to be healthy. If you have anxiety, that's normal. We all have anxiety over some things, and so what are some strategies and tips that you can use when you're feeling a little stressed out? That will hopefully help them when they go on to college or wherever they need to go after here. So, that's kind of our goal, and Daisy Summers, Adrian Kamarchek, and Randy Papinsis earned their Reserve State of Manager certificate. So, they, they're in the restaurant class, and they learn all of these tips and tricks they have to study, and then they have to take this test, and so then that gives them the, the first step of restaurant management certificate. So, they passed that, so that was great. And then tomorrow, Roland, Dawn, and I and Mr. Vanossick are taking 25 students to the Minnesota Minneapolis Institute of Art to see the In Your Hands American Indian Artist Display, join the institute and participate in a simple indigenous mudding event. So, I'm looking forward to that. The kids are looking forward to it, so it'll be fun. So, we have 25 students that we'll take.
We do, we said with the speaker on the 19th too, for our staff, Dr. Anton Schur is going to come and speak with our staff, kind of on some Native American historical perspectives, some travel for informed education. I'm gonna invite him, inviting all of you, but we've all seen him speak, yes.
When is it?
January 19th.
Okay.
Yep, I invited 11. Yep, I invite the board. The plan is tentatively, I have it start at 8 o'clock in the auditorium, so.
Oh, you're killing me. 8 a.m.?
Yep, it's a Friday morning. We'll invite all the staff and we put, you know, we're, teachers are here anyway, parents will be here, but we'll thoroughly invite out to all drivers, cooks, custodian, whatever, so. But the board's working. I heard him speak, Sandy had said, you know, and he does a nice job, very good presentation.
He's worth getting up at 8 a.m.
Okay.
Yeah, it's totally perfect.
One other thing along the MTSS, Kevin, I had one of the co-op people that works for our district come over and really compliment our MTSS system. She says the strongest in the building she works with throughout the co-op, so it's, have a nice little appreciation for, for our staff and what we have won.
The National Honor Society induction ceremony was great. And Cassie's speech was phenomenal. I had goosebumps. That was just beautiful.
Thank you, Jen, for reminding me. You know, it's all these little things that you go, okay, what did we do last month and what happened? You did a great job.
It's hard to hit everything, isn't it?
It's like throwing out there, okay, people, who stepped on here?
I emailed all of my kids' teachers. Who's doing Secret Santa? Because I can't keep this straight. Please let me know if I'm supposed to say something that we can't. I totally get it.
Okay, we'll move on to community education. Ms. Parkin, would you share?
So yes, Playground Renee has been reaching out to playground servicing companies for updated bids. Last bids we had were pre-COVID. I met with a rep a couple of weeks ago and I should, he should have something for me after the holidays that I'll, you know, present on to you guys. Just primarily for the preschool and then if we can start to get some paths in around the big equipment and so. We are still working on that. Youth service grants, so usually they're, they're called youth service grants. They're now called youth philanthropy. They're decided by our youth philanthropy board. In the content agenda, you guys already approved three of them, but I thought I would let you know that it was a really fun meeting. We had, I think, 12 ninth through 12th graders and they were reading through these grant reports and they're like, you know, this budget is really weak. We don't understand what this means and what this, and it was, so it was kind of fun to see them like just kind of really dive into it. And at one point, one of the girls said, this is really interesting. And I'm like, yes. So it was kind of fun. And so we don't, we don't have it again until March, but we'll have more to submit for, for you. One of the stipulations with this Northern Foundation grant is that I have to, their funding stream requires me to keep track of a lot more data than I ever have in the last couple of years and so. This last, so far this school year, from September to now, we've had 71 older adults in our building and over 600 volunteer hours in three and a half months. And so this community, it just comes out. I mean, you see them in our buildings, with grand friends, classroom tutors, book buddies, cruise clubs, sewing helpers. It is, it's incredible. And when I speak in these regional meetings and I say this, I mean, other schools are like, what? How? What are you, what, I'm like, they just, there's really a home in our building for people to come and volunteer and it's just, um, it's really neat to see. And so winter sports are underway. We have 81 playing basketball, elementary, elementary, 81 playing basketball, 65 in wrestling, 40 in cheer squad and 40 youth bowlers. And so our kids are staying active. We have a new partnership with the J Queens. They're coming in every Friday for a really new fun art club.
That's fantastic.
With 15 elementary youth and I'm hoping, hoping, I'm hoping it becomes a, a normal, like get them in our building every, every year. So it's kind of a try on, I hope it goes well, but so there's a lot more, but we'll stop.
When is the next, when is your next advisory?
Oh, yeah, um, probably in January. So like, there's no really set dates for those. It's just I look at the calendar and say, when is nothing else going on in community ed? Should we maybe just throw it right on four o'clock before the next, the next board meeting?
The fifth, the board meeting's the eighth.
All right, four o'clock.
Four o'clock, okay.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you for keeping me looking ahead.
Now you're really looking ahead. You're looking into 2024. Okay, Mr. Stifter, you're up.
All right, go ahead. Number of things here, enrollment, just a quick update. We're down eight students this month. I'm not, with, you know, as I mentioned, the board shared at two grade levels, juniors and eighth graders, we lost, we dropped three students there. That makes, that's the bulk of that eight. But our enrollments that trend down, as I mentioned, I mentioned every meeting, it's kind of where we're at as a district. Any questions on that?
I have one about especially the juniors. Did they leave to go to another district? Did they just transition out? Did they?
I don't have an exact answer on that, but oftentimes junior leveling, kids may have transitioned into our old program. I don't know that for a fact and, and without Lisa here to address that, but yeah. Usually younger than that, they're because they're moving away or something happened or they're, maybe parents are working in a different community or so on, so. So the alt school building just kind of came up last, about a month ago, the Habitat for Humanity had an article in the paper and it said, if you know of a building, it would be potential. Contact us. I contacted Habitat for Humanity. I met with a group of their board. We looked, went through the alt school, also took them out to the farm and went through that house. They are interested in the alt school building. So I've been in contact with MSBA, working with them. Back in, I think it was 2008, the school had some, where the gravel parking lot is, there were houses there that they sold and were moved. It was directed back to that. I kind of found that documentation. I did update it and add it, had Heather add it to the agenda, maybe Friday or just maybe just this morning. But still have it. What's suggested is that we put up for sealed bid, sealed bid and they can, or anybody else can bid on it with the idea that they'd be responsible for moving it and everything that entails. I think that's a good option to, to move that building. At this time, they're not interested in the farmhouse, out at the farm. I don't know if they would be down the road. I think they just want one project at a time, so. Would like to have the board to make a motion first, you know, to do this, but I don't know, being that I was late with getting the information to you and that our next meeting will be January 8th, I don't know that that, I don't know what I'll get to do on a sealed bid or doing it over Christmas breaks. A good time to have that open anyway. I just more or less wanted to inform the board that, that that's what we're looking at unless there's a strong objection, but you know, once, if this, this works out and we move that and that gets moved off. You know, there's some work will have to be done on the lot there. Soon we'll make a parking, but there would be water coming in and, and electrical and stuff that we'd have to address or take care of, so. But then that gets the alt building out of our, out of our hair.
I was so hoping it was going to be a big bonfire.
Too many power lines and too much stuff around, so. The Habitat for Humanity really, you know, it is, does have a low maintenance or low maintenance siding on it. The windows weren't in terrible shape. You know, that some of the updating that we would have to do to keep using it as an alt school might not be required. They were discussing, you know, some of the space in the, in the bathroom, for example. They didn't know if they would have to address that, being it's going to be a, you know, a, a single family house, whereas we would have had to redo that, you know, indoor ways and things like that.
Can I remember the discussion too about how extensive the amount of utilities were that we were paying for that space too? So I think it is a good idea to move it along if someone's able to use it even better.
Yep, yeah, so.
How much time do they have to move it off site?
That'd be up for us to decide. I mean, once we, we get back, I don't know if I have that in my document, I think, thinking through. I think there was a timeline in there, but I, I just can't pull up, but we could, we can kind of set that. You know, what our expectation is, so. But I'm all right with, you want to look at that if you have questions? Again, I feel I didn't get to spend as much time on that last week because I had hoped, so. I may have some tweaking to do to that document or somewhere information I got to find, but at least we got it. I wanted to put it out there that there is somebody interested and we might be able to move on that, so. And I don't know if this will trigger others to be interested or not, so. Any questions on that? Any other questions on that? If I can move on?
Yes, please.
Earn safe and sick time, is that put in an update? This is another gift from the last legislative session. All our groups that have, that, that we have currently have more sick time than what the law requires. The difference in what the law is requiring is there's more options to use your sick time. So we're going to, you know, and, and there's wider range of categories that people can use to, to take a sick day. That's different than what's in our contracts. So we're going to maintain our current sick leave banks, if you will, as we have them, those people have established, but starting on January 1, every 30 hours a staff member works, they can earn one hour of burn safe and sick time, which can be used for a wider range of sick leave. Sick leave purposes. This is something that all businesses, everybody is doing. I think the intent was to address businesses who don't offer sick time to get them to do that, but then all of us are having to adjust to it as well, so. And the other thing that's bringing this, I feel like December 1st, nobody really knew yet what the heck we had to do with that. And then about the 10th, somebody came out, okay, that's what we're going to do. And we spent a few days, the state and other groups spent a few days kicking around when somebody finally put an idea down. So MSBA, it was probably last Monday. They had something out with an option of how to, how to address it, so we're not, it's just, we'll see how it goes. We do have to have something in place working as of January 1 or we're in violation of the federal, or of the state statute that was put into place last summer, so.
Well, and there was some hope that they would push the timeline back when this would start, but it doesn't look like that's going to happen, so. And it is, it is a nightmareish.
Unfortunately, our, where we do our leave program, we do relief, they were able to set up so that they can track it, you know, they can track our regular plans, sick leave, as well as the E S S T, burn safe and sick time as well, so. We talked about last summer, we went through and we're still kind of challenged there with our people using the clock to logging in, checking, you know, doing the time clock plus. That's perfect that we did that now, so that'll help us calculate that as well, so. And that's the other thing, all our game workers, if you, our game clock operators, announcers, scorekeepers, we got to calculate it for them too, so. Every 30 hours they work, we had to grant them an hour of sick leave, so if, yeah, which is.
Nightmareish.
Yeah, so.
And even salaried employees.
Well, and we were, yep, salaried employees. They did exempt coaches and because basically if, well, when I was coaching, if I was sick, I didn't go to practice, my assistants covered it or somebody covered it. I didn't get doc pay for that night, right? We weren't, I didn't have to use a sick day or I didn't. So they're saying that, I don't know what they're calling it, but no, you have to apply for coaches or some of those stipend type positions, so.
So are our salaried employees going to have to start using the time clock also?
No, they are because they're salaried at where they're at and teachers won't, they'll just automatically earn, earn that time, so. Every, every 30 hours they work, they'll be, they're going to be figured out. I think it's 7.58 hours a day and then I'll calculate off of that. There we go. I don't have this on there, but I did let you know last, of the farm and potential out there. I met with Paul Peltier from Rams, Range Area Municipalities in a virtual meeting. I triple R B, Iron Range Rehabilitation. About our, about the fact we own the land and some of the ideas. The idea with getting I triple R B involved is they do a lot of work in communities with infrastructure. They've done a lot of work with helping build, you know, we hear about Rock Ridge School, Nashua Kiwanis building a school. Grand Rapids has a couple of middle school, or middle school, a couple of elementaries they've helped fund. It's kind of what I triple R B funds were originally, excuse me, established for was to help build communities and one of their focuses is on housing and we all know Aiken needs housing with the, the plan that we have that was last drawn. There's, I'm going to not have the exact number, but roughly 70 to 80 acres of land that we, out there we probably wouldn't need that could be developed into housing. Those are all things that have to be ironed out as we move forward, but it's just, Paul from Rams was excited and Jeff Schultz met with him and Roy Smith and Whitney Ridlin, that's from A L I. It's a branch under I triple R B, A L I is Advanced Learning Institute. Their goal is to bring opportunities to the, to the range area as well, so just kind of just trying to keep that on your radar. And then the last thing that's come up, well, I shouldn't say last thing, but the gobbler mascot, the current gobbler mascot, the, what'd you call it? The turkey hawk look?
Mean turkey.
The mean, whatever, that's owned by Shirts Plus.
Chicken hawk, yeah.
Yeah, Shirts Plus owns that. We're allowed to use it on stuff we buy from Shirts Plus or on our letterhead. We're not supposed to be using it elsewhere. I've had people ask, offer to buy or pay for the logo so that the school could own it. It's $5,000. They'd sell the logo for $5,000. We'd still have to use, only use it on their clothing. Or if we paid $10,000, we could use it on a variety of clothing from wherever, but Shirts Plus would still have the final say on whether or not that quality of clothing met the standard for their logo. So we still wouldn't necessarily own it. And this has been a discussion in the past, what to do with that. Our fab lab and, and our marketing class would really like to maybe start producing some things, but they want to have, they want a logo they can use. So I guess I'd like to have a new logo created, a school logo that we can use, whether it's in our fab lab or if any of the teams or clubs. Whether they do something with local or through our fab lab or through another vendor, that just kind of our logo and, and I'm a novice at trying to follow through that process, so.
Can we do a student-based program where we do almost like a contest? We have lots of talented kids that maybe could build us a logo before we go out and if that doesn't work, we could revisit spending some kind of money, but I would prefer to let our kids at least.
Would it look like the new state flag then?
Well, then you don't pick that one, Brian. I mean, there'll be lots of options. There's lots of talented kids that could build us something amazing.
A Minecraft turkey.
Well, I don't have any.
There might be one of those options, Steve.
I think at some point we would have, uh, let's say a professional take a look at it or maybe.
Yeah, make sure it's on in our.
My printer. Then there's the whole thing of, if you will, marketing it and using it, you know, to, I don't know that where you inquire every club in the school to use it, but it would be it'd be nice to have a logo. I've gone back and forth with one that was old and when I get frustrated with the $10,000 price tag on this, I'll switch it back to the old logo.
I think I, when I, when I think about the logo and the whole, everything that's goes on around that logo. I, I'm thinking about the strategic plan that we just passed, where we talked about marketing a school. And so I think if we're going to talk about changing the logo, now is the time to do it. And I, I get a little bit confused sometimes because, you know, it depends what sport you go to. There's a different design every place you go. And so it's like, maybe there needs to be something a little more streamlined.
Yeah, should I get on my soapbox?
Please.
Yes.
And when you're done, then we're going to let Roland talk.
Yeah, well, I read your email and I was just really frustrated because without the support from the community and the school, their logo doesn't have much likes to stand on and vice versa. And so I was just really frustrated by that and I thought that we were finally going in a direction where we had some consistency with our logo because with our signage, we just had that big mural put in the cafeteria with the gobbler on it. And so it just, it made me really sad, but you know, as we move forward with the strategic plan and Dan's getting all the right people in the room to start talking about the farm. Like if it, we just need to do something all new, like that's, that's fine, but it's just extremely frustrating where you thought you were going in the right direction and the other teams are branching out to other companies. and the other teams are branching out to other companies, not at a fault of their own. It was due to some, uh, bad, bad business happening, which is just really frustrating. And if we needed to have stuff approved by them constantly, I have a feeling that that wouldn't be held up, even if we did spend the ten grand to do it. So, um, worked for them for a while, love, loved them, but I can just see the, the situation, you know, as a, as a supporter and a, a customer as well, so I understand people's frustration. But, um, this might be a good opportunity if we're going to go down that route to look into some website things, like Roland has said. Um, I don't know what a quote like that would look like. I love the idea of getting student input involved. I don't know if you open that up to the community as well, if you wanted to do like some sort of contest or have some sort of collaborative whatever, um, so students could learn a little bit about some design software and things like that. Um, I know I have worked with someone, um, in B P A that was in their graphic design class and tried to assist there. Um, so I don't know if that would be a place to start or not. But, um, yeah, it, it made me sad, but, um, if we're going to do it, I hope that we can come up with something that we're going to use and come up with something very, um, all-incasing, so, yeah. Rant over.
You know, I remember when this was going on, it started, I, how did, how did this start? Does anybody know?
Um, the logo was just created.
By whose direction, who gave, who gave whoever the direction to do this?
Um, from what I know and understand, the logo was just created, um, by Shirts Plus just to sell out to the community. I don't think there was any talks with the school before it happened. Um, and then it was just kind of adopted by the school, and I think those conversations happened where you can use it as long as it's not something that we're going to lose money on, um, yeah.
Then I was, I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead. But, and at the time, the board couldn't decide really how to pursue, pursue or the, what to do with it, so this kind of went with. Shirts Plus owns the logo, they had devised, designed the logo for their apparel, for whatever. And, and somewhere along, the school wanted to use it and access to it, got access to it. And the agreement was, or is apparently, that, um, again, we can, if we're buying equipment for, or clothing from them through them, they can use the logo, but we're not supposed to, we're, we can't use it elsewhere with other vendors, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's, it's probably the worst case of brand, uh, that I've ever seen any company ever do, my entire life. I mean, I haven't seen anything like this. You don't just create something and they say, this is yours, but, you know, we own it, yet this is I S D one, right? I mean, it's just, I mean, I don't know how that works, right? You know, when you talk about logos and logo designs, I've created several from just small business to regional in this, in this area. The, the whole brand, the whole logo, I mean, yeah, it'd be nice to set it out for our kids or somebody to, right? I know we have a lot of talent, but, you know, are they going to be able to create a standardized form of using it? So typically you have something and, and you have everything that printers are going to use on, and the variations of what it is. Um, and these things have to be adhered to because we would pass policy that say there's no variations, deviation of this. Um, I'm not sure a student would know how to do that without the help of a professional. So we'd probably be hiring somebody, maybe that, like you said, to clean something and make sure that it was put in the right way. Because good creative may not necessarily be good imagery to use for, for the logo, so. So you have to have, and then when you go out to it, you have to have creative direction, so, okay. So who writes the creative brief? Because you got to have a creative brief to get a logo, to get that, to exactly what we want to do and what we want to use. And then we have everything else that's out there. I mean, it, this goes right down to the font of the A, right? I mean, I've seen different fonts. I mean, A has to have a font, A has to have everything, um, the colors of it were red and black, right? And there's white that's mixed into it. So it's a bigger project, um, and sometimes, you know, the dollar amount, we're going to spend a lot more than ten thousand dollars on this. I mean, it's just flat out, it's going to cost the district a lot of money to, to switch logos. Um, and I'm not saying that this, that other one's the right one, but it's going to cost us more money than ten grand to do. Because if we're going to be switching all the signage in the school, because we have to, I mean, let's face it, we get something new, then everything, that old one's gone, in my eyes, and we have to phase, and we got to move to the new one. So all uniforms, all everything, everything that we're doing from this point forward is done, and so it may be a little more costly than you think to just do. It's not as an easy thing as I, I think we envision, we visualize it. So I think there's maybe a little bit more discussion that we can have to start laying it out. I get logos done, I just created a small business logo, you know, under, under a thousand bucks with standards, comes in, give you different variations, well, but, you know, I got a couple, I know a couple designers, I wouldn't advocate, I don't have to advocate for designers, there's plenty of them out there, but there's, there's freelance designers that can do logos, they give you three, four looks, you choose, get one or two variations to clean up, they're all pretty good, you know? You have agencies do it, then it's a lot more money. You know, ad agencies are a ton of money usually, but, you know, there's a good, there's good creative freelance people that have, have done those things. But, yeah, it's, it's a mess. It is a mess, like it's some, where do you, we sit here in the middle of it.
Guess that's the reason where, when this logo came along, that we went the route they did, right? But I guess I would look at that, we're changing all the signage immediately, we, I mean, if we're going to, I don't see us being able to pull that off, just with the cost of it. I would see it being phased in or that moving forward, this is what we're going to use as a logo on.
I wonder, I wonder, you know, I really, I do not want to see us have to have a new logo designed. I wonder if we shouldn't be sitting down with the folks from Shirts Plus and having a conversation. You know, I, I don't have a problem paying somebody for their, their skills, their design, their, I don't, we're going to pay for it no matter what. But I, I think that the hangup is not being able to use it on whatever we want. And so would they be willing to, you know, maybe we can work something out, negotiate something so that they would release that? Because I think it would be beneficial for our stu, for the fab, fab lab to be able to design, create and make stuff to have a student shop or whatever, where students could buy things right here in the school and.
And that's what we'd like to get to, that's kind of where we brought this, this point to back topic room for discussion here, because that's exactly.
Jim, I agree with, yeah, I agree with you that we should sit down with Shirts Plus and just have a good conversation with them, and I'd love to be part of that. Um, and excuse me for my lack of knowledge in this area, but it sounds like the two of you could totally handle this without hiring any outside entity. I, like, really think you two could do this.
Well, I mean, you, you, she manages a brand, I mean, plain and simple, right? I mean, she knows that, and then when anybody does anything that offends that brand, it, you're on them, right? I mean, there's just, and you, you work for a brand, Jan, that, 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 nobody, that, that, you're, nobody messes with that outside. Everything that comes off is consistent, right from your boards to your communication and the, you know, everywhere, right to, right to, as you walk in the door, you know, you, same thing, you, everything, every department, when you look at what you have, every department, you know where you're looking at the M N D and R, right? I mean, it all kind of flows, and we really should flow like that, because we can, and that's just it. Somehow we got to go get there.
It goes way beyond, yeah, it's not just a logo, it's.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a organizational communication tool. I've worked for large corporations, they all, everybody, of course, state agencies, everyone's got those. It is a big investment.
What do you think of, when you think of I S D one? That's when everything you look at.
Okay, but what I was going to say is if you look around the building right now, there's like twelve different turkeys in this place, and we have never replaced all of the signs, and the only thing I don't care for about this is feeling like they're holding us hostage, is what this feels like to me. Here you go, we're going to go out for five, ten years and we're going to brand you this, and then the only way you get to keep doing it is if you give us this, when we didn't ask for it in the first place. So for me, it's like I'm, I'm not on board for signing up for the ten thousand dollars just because I don't feel like it was something that even the board in the past had asked for. So it was an unasked-for given, basically, and now it feels like they're like, if you really want to keep going with this, then you have to give us this. I don't care for that myself.
I think that's the way it's always been, they haven't changed anything. My understanding is that's when they brought it forward for the district to.
I don't, I'm with you, I don't even like the idea of meeting with them. I mean, I couldn't even get my orders prepared by them and delivered.
They're not, again, that's, that.
Yeah, that's a separate, but.
That's a separate deal, but.
But what I'm saying is when we look at the branding, yes, we got to do branding, but we have yet to in this building, brand everything this direction, which I know we couldn't because there was legal things to it. But with any of the other logos we've had in the past, I mean, we've had the multiple different ones over my lifetime, and they don't go away. They stay, I feel like we could have a hall of mascots in this place of all of our different turkeys over the years, you know?
Every six, seven, eight years, there would be a new mascot.
Yeah, yeah, they'd make him a little buffer and put a, a little more of a letterman's jacket on him and, yeah.
I'm not saying that it's right or wrong what Shirts Plus is doing here, but we do have to, there are two sides to every story, and we don't know their financial situation, and they are small business owners in a community that gets a hit of a lot for things, so I don't think that it's fair to, um, not give them the opportunity to voice their side of things to the board before we make a decision about it.
I think if we can bring it up, that if we're going to be using it in the fab lab and things, we're teaching students to work within that same industry.
Right.
Or teaching kids that could intern for them in the future and have some base of knowledge. Because, and I, I wasn't intern for Shirts Plus, and I happen to be going to school and learning these things, but these kids could have the skills learned here and apply them while working for them. And I feel like we could help each other because if there's a different gobbler mascot here, who's going to go by the other gobbler mascot? And then we got an A here, an A here, the football, the basketball, like it's all everywhere. And so if we could make it one, it would all be better, but I see where you're coming from too, Holly. I, I, I got a little defensive about it at first because I, you know, I want it to be a partnership and it kind of sounded like we wouldn't have enough control to make it that all-inclusive brand like Roland's talking about. And that's the main goal, right? Where if we can't put it where it needs to be and it needs to be seen, what's the point? So I, I see both sides and I, I think that it would be beneficial to meet with them, I don't know what the outcome would be, but, um.
But at least we'd know where we're going.
Well, and, you know, and I, I think it's easy to lose sight sometimes as we're looking ahead, but Shirts Plus has been very generous to this community in the past and, and to, to the school community as well in, in a lot of ways. And so I, to me, it's always worth sitting down and having a conversation. I, I too understand that feeling of being pigeonholed or feeling like we're being forced to use something that we didn't ask for and, but I, I think that there's more to the story and I think that maybe we could negotiate. I mean, the, the logo, we've been using the logo, this is my third year on this board, and that same logo has been used for a few years before I ever got here. So, you know, we, the majority of us weren't a part of the conversation when the logo was first being used. And so I think I, I'm happy to sit down with them and, and have a conversation. I, I mean, it doesn't cost anything to have a conversation except time. And, and if, and if it's a, a set, this is what we want, then, you know, the answer's probably going to be, well, we're going to do something different then.
Well, then maybe we could phase it as, here's our logo, if they were willing to compromise and give us control of it, that the, um, they could prepare that brand manual and make it official, so it's not being flipped or changed how it's not supposed to. And so it's laid out, how you would get it from an agency. Because design-wise, they're very capable, but, um, we need to have control of it for sure.
Yeah, it just happened, just like, I remember when it was, and I was like, because I think I got it even run by my, it came across my computer one day from somebody, and I was like.
I'll, I'll see if I can set up a meeting with, with the owners of Shirts Plus.
Yeah, after Christmas.
I just want to pop back up for a second, Dan, when you talked about the housing needed. There are some districts in the cities right now that are building homes with their students within their developments, and that was some kind of, it's not obviously the Iron Range funding, it was funding done in the metro. But basically they're building these neighborhoods for the different cities within their, their school districts. So they're taking the construction classes out, working along with the regular construction workers. So that was kind of back on our housing thing. That is a program that we can see being utilized in the metro right now.
Real quick, facts update, we got a little bit of that, but there are carpentry works going on this week with goals of having it ready to back up and running in, uh, January. And then winter conference, January tenth, eleventh and twelfth, that's the, Wednesday is the phase three training, Thursday, Friday are the, is a regular annual conference, so that's the three days after the weekend, we have a board member on the, board meeting on the eighth, so. We'll, uh, I think everybody's, is planning on going, we'll figure out who's going downwind and maybe carpool or whatever, when they go, planning on going down. Let's see, I think, no, let's say there's, probably Tuesday night.
Yeah, I think Tuesday, yeah, because we start right away in the morning.
Yeah, it's like eight or nine in the morning, who wants to get up before the sun.
Couldn't even get up by eight or nine.
Yeah, so I don't know if everybody's planning on going down Tuesday night?
I'm going Tuesday.
Me too.
Me too.
I was going to say in our upcoming meetings then, I'm assuming we're not having policy on the tenth because we will not be here. And are you going to have your personnel in?
No.
The twenty-seventh, okay. And then the date needs to be changed on the board meeting.
You'll get that, all right? You'll put that in a meeting.
Yep, yep, um, yeah, so the January board meeting will be January eighth.
I'm not going to write it in my calendar.
Six thirty, and then that personnel meeting should be good, the following one, the twenty-fourth.
What, I don't have a list of fifteen meetings to read off? Two meetings, January eighth, the board meeting, and then January twenty-fourth, personnel meeting.
That would be in my list.
Well, we are at the end of our meeting, and I always like to give an opportunity, is there anything that we missed or came up that anybody wants to add to or contribute to the meeting?
Thanks for putting that, uh, web call together, Dan, with all those people. I think that's the only way that we're going to move forward on that.
All right, nobody has anything more to add, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm not going to ask for discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed by the same sign, any abstentions, motion carries.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, I'm off the record, if you need, I'm going to pick up my orders.
What do you have there?
Shirts Plus, they, there's dozens of people that have been.